Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the role of the members?
Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Stites?
Here.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Ms. Hoppy?
Here.
Ms. Haltine?
Present.
Mr. Ohm?
Here.
Ms. Dozeman?
Here.
Ms. Nosler Beck?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your package, you have minutes for August the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting, August the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting, September the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a special study session, September the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a special meeting, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, a city council meeting, October third, two thousand and twenty-two, a study session, and October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Councilperson Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one small change on the minutes of October third. I was the one running the meeting. It claims, it says Mayor Pro Tem Hoppy. I think it should perhaps say former Mayor Pro Tem Hoppy in front of it, just to be more clear.
Okay. Are there any other corrections to be noted in the minutes? Okay, so they will be accepted as clarified there for our clerk. Are there any changes noted to the agenda? If not, we will let the agenda stand, so ordered. And we've got some proclamations. And I'd like to invite Maki Delet to the podium. Maki, thank you for joining us today. We have a proclamation in support of Small Business Saturday, which is November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge recognizes the importance of local small businesses and the significant contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-one point seven million small businesses in the United States that employ forty-seven point one percent of the employees in the private sector. And whereas, small businesses are critically important to the overall economic health of the United States, highlighting the impact of supporting local small businesses in communities like Wheat Ridge. And whereas, Wheat Ridge local businesses create jobs, boost our local economy, and contribute to the vibrancy of our neighborhoods. And the city of Wheat Ridge remains committed to providing entrepreneurs and small business owners the support they need to thrive and grow. And whereas advocacy groups, local governments, and public and private organizations, including the Wheat Ridge Chamber of Commerce and the Wheat Ridge Business Association, support the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two a Small Business Saturday, and encourage all of our citizens to support small businesses in their communities. Maki, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you council members and for recognizing this day. Small businesses is an integral part of this community, and we appreciate, as a president of the Wheat Ridge Business Association, I thank you all for this recognition. Thank you.
Maki, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Our next proclamation is designation of November, November, as Native American Heritage Month. Whereas during Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of our country. And whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas, Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through their generosity of culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and cultural sustainability. And whereas, our country is blessed by the character and strength exemplified by the Native Americans who have answered the call of service in our armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. We honor our Native American veterans and those who are, who serve an active duty for their bravery and sacrifice. And whereas, the Land Acknowledgement Committee in the city of Wheat Ridge is working actively to honor indigenous people who have lived and worked on the land we now call home. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is committed to developing and maintaining relationships with local tribal communities. And whereas, during the month of November, we honor our native peoples and this their ancestral home and recognize their continued contribution in strengthening the diversity of our society. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November two thousand and twenty-two as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Wheat Ridge, and encourage all residents to join in this observance. I would like to invite Sergeant Jamie Watson to the podium to join me. How are you tonight?
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Thank you for being here. This is a proclamation for Veterans Day, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and National Veterans and Military Families Month, November two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas America has the greatest armed forces in the history of the world. And whereas, we owe a debt we can never repay to those who have served, who serve, and those who serve alongside them, their families and caregivers. And whereas, we recognize and thank our service personnel, their families and caregivers, for their indispensable contributions and immeasurable sacrifices in support of our national security. And whereas, as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, we send our gratitude to millions of service members, veterans, military families, caregivers, and survivors who have served and continue to serve our nation. And whereas, it is not only the person who wears the uniform serving our country, but also their families who make enormous sacrifices for our nation. And whereas, our veteran and military families do so much and ask for so little. They are strong and adaptable, changing course to accommodate the needs of our country, often foregoing personal wishes. They are capable and proud, holding down the home front during their loved ones' deployment, coping through their absence, knowing the risk, but providing unwavering support, and helping them readjust when they come home. And whereas, we honor them and their invaluable contributions. We share in the pride in our armed forces, and we will never forget that they and their loved ones do for us. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November two thousand and twenty-two as National Veterans and Military Families Month, and recognize and honor our veterans on Veterans Day, Thursday, November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Throughout November, a grateful nation in the city of Wheat Ridge can show appreciation through the spouses, partners, children, caregivers, and survivors of our service members and veterans for their selfless sacrifice on behalf of our nation. Would you like to say a few words?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager Patrick Goff, I've been asked to accept this proclamation several times in the past, and it always gives me such great pleasure and honor to accept this proclamation. And the feeling that it gives me inside, not just for me, but for the other veterans and family members, is beyond words. It's, this is something that means so much to each of us. It's nice to know, I've been deployed three times, and it's nice to know that when we leave, we have a family back here with the city of Wheat Ridge to come home to. And not only do we have the family here that takes care of us while we're gone, we have people in this organization who help and remain in contact with our families, to help our families through everything. So it's, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here again this year. So on behalf of the current veterans, past veterans, and future veterans of the city of Wheat Ridge, as employees and citizens, I graciously accept this and I'm proud again to take care of this for another year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Angel Le Pierre to join me on the podium. Thank you. How are you doing? Good. Thank you for coming up. This is a proclamation in support of Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Week, November fourteenth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas dedicated law enforcement records personnel serve the state of Colorado to provide communities with vital services. And whereas, law enforcement's records personnel are crucial to assisting law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspects. And whereas, these professionals continually use their expertise and experience in maintaining criminal justice standards and improving apprehension strategies. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff law enforcement records is influenced by their positive attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas, law enforcement's records personnel serving the state of Colorado exhibit professionalism, efficiency, and compassion during the performance of their essential duties every day. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge is proud to the dedicated police department and records professionals who respond to the needs of officers and detectives while also serving our community members with care and compassion during, doing, during what for them is often a very difficult time. And whereas, the state of Colorado has designated the second week in November to recognize law enforcement's, law enforcement records personnel. Now therefore, I Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby proclaim November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two through November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Week, and ask our citizens to join in this celebration. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
So, Mayor Starker and City Council, Mr. Goff and Ally, and especially Chief Murtha, who couldn't be here, but also our officers and detectives, thank you so much, because I've worked for other agencies, this department, this city treats all of our personnel and records as civilians. They treat us as part of the blue family, and it's very nice to have that opportunity to be part of that and support them. So, thank you very much for this.
Thank you. We're now going. Okay. We're now going to our public's right to speak. Members of the public may come and speak on any matter, not on the agenda for maximum of three minutes under public's right to speak. I have several people who have signed up to speak, and when I call your name, if you would please come to the podium and please give us your first name and last name, if you would please spell your last name, and give us your address, then the clerk will start the timer, and you'll have three minutes to address the council. And our first speaker is Lee Recca, and Rose Marie, looks like Bowden, on deck.
Lee Recca, R-E-C-C-A, and I live at forty-four seventy-five Brentwood Street. I'm returning today to again ask that a study group be formed to stop the opening of a firearm supply store at ninety-one sixty-six West Forty-Fourth Avenue, just two hundred and twenty-five feet away from Anderson Pool and within walking distance of at least three schools. A gun store at this location presents an unacceptable risk to the park and pool users and the community. There are two accessways from the gun store to the pool. One goes in between buildings, trees, and parked cars with lots of cover and hiding places, and the other is a sidewalk leading from the corner directly to the pool. A gunman could walk there and shoot through the open chain link fencing. There are several ways this gun store could be stopped. The Federal Gun Free School Zones Act prevents firearms within one thousand feet of a school. Anderson Park has a swimming school and other educational activities. In addition, Compass Montessori School is four blocks west, and schoolchildren regularly walk down Forty-Fourth Avenue past that site. School zone means in, on the grounds of, or within one thousand feet of the grounds of a school. In addition, there is a new state law that gives localities more leeway to impose restrictions on gun trafficking. SB fifty-one two fifty-six, called the Local Regulation of Firearms, enables a local government to enact an ordinance, regulation, or other law governing or prohibiting the sale, purchase, or transfer of a firearm, ammunition, or accessory. But the most compelling reason, I think, for keeping a gun shop out of the entrance to Anderson Park is to avoid destroying the sense of security in our community that allows people to take their children and grandchildren to the park or pool. It is a tradition to take my six grandchildren to the carnation festival, the circus, the fireworks, Anderson Park concerts, and the green belt. All this would be out if a gun shop is allowed there. No more Joe's Cafe or Pietrus Pizza. And many other Wheat Ridge residents feel the same way. The gun shop would most certainly lead to a sharp reduction in attendance and proceeds. Due to these concerns, I again ask that a task force be appointed to investigate this and make recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rose Marie Bowden.
Rose Marie Bowden, B-O-W-D-E-N, thirty-five thirty-five Dudley Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I received a letter from the city that it said, as a result, the city council will be considering the request for traffic claiming measures on Dudley Street on and on, scheduled for November fourteenth, seven P.M. here. It's not on the agenda. Am I missing something?
Well?
I'm here to respond to the letter that said this was on the agenda tonight, and it's not on the agenda. What did I do wrong?
You didn't do anything wrong, sorry. It was pulled from the agenda. There was, one of your neighbors pulled their signature, I believe, from the petition, so we couldn't bring it in front of council tonight.
That's good. You never want to pull their signature, so that's good.
I believe a letter went out, speaking of the pulling from the agenda, so apologize, you didn't receive that in time.
All right. No worries. We'll take off. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Walter Cordapal? Cordapal? I'm gonna let you give, I'm gonna let you give me a good pronunciation on that, sir.
Yeah, Walter Cordial, K-O-R-D-Z-I-E-L, and would live at thirty-five thirty-five Dudley Street also. And I was gonna speak on behalf of the letter also that, in response to the, for the speed bumps and the parking signs, but I guess that'll be a later date.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak under, under public's right to speak, and let me also note that we, if you are joining us online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format, and we will bring you into the meeting. And if you do that now, I'll ask the clerk if anyone has raised their hands. Okay, and there's no one else to come forward to speak, so we will close that, pardon me, portion of our, our agenda, and move to agenda item number one. And Counselor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce that item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill number eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance amending sections two dash eighty-nine and eleven dash five hundred and sixty-five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to provide an administrative subpoena process for hotel licensing. At issue, this council bill amends the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to authorize the issuance of administrative subpoenas for records related to hotel licensing requirements.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is not, it is not quasi-judicial, and it is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Mr. Dahl, our city attorney.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this presentation, I'd like to introduce Nicholas Klein, who's a new attorney in our office. He's over here, and he's gonna make the presentation on this ordinance. He's drafted it. He's worked with the city staff in creating that. And of course, this ordinance furthers the city's goals around the hotel licensing process that has been important to the council, and you've been working on for some time. So, I'd like to introduce Nick, and he can take the podium and tell you about it.
Very good. Mr. Klein, if you'll join us at the, at the podium, and I'll ask the clerk to tell, turn off our red light. There you go.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a pretty straightforward, simple ordinance that amends chapter two and chapter eleven. And it all stems from a United States Supreme Court case, Los Angeles versus Patel. There, what do you know? They also considered a hotel licensing scheme, and they held the scheme to be facially unconstitutional, because at the time, when administrative warrants, or administrative subpoenas would be issued to inspect books for hotels, there was no appeal process that hotel owners could undertake. And in effect, you could either decide to comply with the subpoena or be punished. And that is what was present in chapter two. So, as you'll see in a response to this, we amended the language to make it unlawful for a party to refuse to obey a subpoena unless that party is pending an administrative appeal concerning that subpoena. And in response to that, we also added to section eleven five sixty-five, a power for the city treasurer or their designee to issue these administrative subpoenas. The administrative subpoenas are pretty normal. In fact, the Supreme Court went so far as to say that procedures like this are ubiquitous. So this isn't anything out of the ordinary legally, but the lack of an appeals process for the administrative subpoena was something that our office highlighted and wanted to make sure that it made the code. And I think that kind of sums up what I have to talk about, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up for the public to come forward and, and speak on this issue. I don't believe I had anybody signed up to speak on, on this one, but if you are here and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now. And if you're online, you can raise your hand, and I don't see anybody coming, so I'll go to questions from council. Going once, going twice. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Looks like we don't have any questions.
Thanks for having me. Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Before I close the public hearing, are there any other questions that counselors have for staff? Counselor Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Goff, can you just explain, we utilize the treasurer's office for other hearings and whatnot. Can you just explain, kind of, this is gonna add to that, so can you just kind of give us the list of the hearings that we utilize our treasurer for?
Mr. Treasurer, do you wanna come speak to that? Mr. Dahl might be able to speak to it too, but mostly a lot of our business licensing, if there's a revocation or suspension in business licensing, or any type of licensing, our city, our city code allows the city treasurer to hold a hearing if requested by the business owner. So, he's, he's done a few, I believe, in a lot of sales tax and business licensing cases. But Chris, you wanna respond to that?
I think it's just what the city manager said. Mostly so far, it's been issues related to audits, things that need to come before me for decisions when a taxpayer has a dispute. I really view my role kind of as a advocate for the taxpayer, work as someone like in a Spudsman role, and listen to them, their side of the story, and advocate on their behalf when it comes to things like audit hearings. So far, we haven't had anything of a business license come to my attention. There were some rumblings about a couple that I was prepping for, but the issue was ultimately resolved. So this would add to those other lists of potential issues that are relative to business licensing.
And just for the record, give us your name and your position.
I'm Chris Miller, city treasurer.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring that up, just to point out that it's, it's not unusual for us to utilize our treasurer's office in this way.
Thank you. Any, any further questions before I close the public hearing? I want to close the public hearing, and Counselor Nosler Beck, would you, may I please have a motion?
I move to approve Council Bill number eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance amending sections two dash eighty-nine and eleven dash five hundred and sixty-five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to provide an administrative subpoena, subpoena process for hotel licensing, and that it take fifteen day, that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion, and a second. My Counselor Stites, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number two. Counselor Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number thirty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution declining full participation in the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program. At issue, the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Act was passed by voters at the November two thousand and twenty election. The new law requires all employers to provide paid family and medical leave to its employees through a state-managed program, which is funded by employer and employee paycheck withholdings. Local governments have the option to decline participation in the program.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is a public hearing, is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation?
We do. I'll turn it over to- I'll turn it over to Ally Scheck, our Administrative Services Director. We have, um, some of our folks from our, um, terrific HR department. She'll introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Um, Ally Scheck here, nice to see everybody. They are terrific. So this is Michael Claussen, our HR manager, who I believe you saw last here in June, and also Melissa Long, who's our newest HR business partner, is just doing an amazing job and has been leading the initiative on Colorado Family, who you also heard from in June, and Melissa's gonna walk you through where we're at today and then ask for your help. Thank you.
Good evening. We're gonna talk to you briefly about the Colorado Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance As you may recall, this program is going to provide up to twelve weeks of paid leave to employees that work in the state. This program is going to be funded by premiums that are assessed against an employee's wages, and that will begin in January. Local government employers do have the option of opting out of participating in the program if they take a vote by their governing body, and this vote must be done and registered with the state no later than January first. At the June twenty-seventh study session, we provided an in-depth review and analysis of this program, and at that time, we recommended opting out of participating. You provided consensus to us to move forward with the opt-out process and to draft a proposal for a city-specific paid leave program. Our draft proposal, which is outlined in your packet, would provide up to twelve weeks of paid leave for city employees for the same reasons as outlined in the family program. Employees would use PTO or an existing sick leave bank to cover the first forty hours of leave and the last forty hours of leave if needed. No premiums would be assessed against an employee's wages, and the wage replacement for all the employees would be one hundred percent. We have provided a chart for comparing the family program with our proposed city paid leave program, and we do anticipate reviewing this program after the first year to assess its efficacy and to make any changes if necessary. We have provided quite a bit of outreach to our employees over the last month and a half. We provided two citywide town halls to present information on the family program and answer questions. We also sent out multiple emails to all of our staff with background information on the family program and notice of this meeting and the opportunity to provide comment. We do welcome any feedback tonight, and we also recommend voting to opt out of participating in the family program. Mr. Mayor, that does conclude our presentation tonight.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I will open this up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, um, but if you are here and would like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium, and, uh, if you are online, you may, uh, raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the discussion, but I don't see any, uh, any public speaking on this one, so I'll go with questions from council. Been left once and twice. Looks like we don't have any, any questions.
All right. Thank you.
So thank you very much for your, um, for your overview of this, this item. Uh, council, any other, uh, any other things that we should ask before we ask for a motion? So I'm going to close the public hearing, and, uh, Counselor Stites, may I have a motion on this item? Ms. Nosler Beck, just raise your hand. I'm sorry, Ms. Nosler Beck. I missed your hand.
I just, I just wanted to make a, a comment. Um, I know that when we were first discussing, um, this, uh, I really put everybody through a lot of questions on, on it, and, um, a lot of that came from, um, my concern that we really were opting into a better program than what was being offered, and I just really wanna thank everybody on staff for really stepping, stepping it up and answering all of my questions. And, um, I think this is a really, um, comprehensive first go at this, and one of the things I really appreciate about the, the program as it's, um, laid out here is that it also gives us an opportunity to revisit it, to make sure that it's actually working for our employees and fitting their families', um, lives and, uh, their needs, so, um, just really appreciate all the, the time and effort, and, um, y'all are great. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Stites, may I have a, a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-two, a resolution declining full participation in the Colorado Paid Family Medical Leave Insurance Program.
Second.
Uh, second by, uh, Counselor Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also wanted to thank staff for coming forward with, um, an alternative plan. I do wanna go on record saying that I, I feel like it's poor policy for the government to impose legislation, and I know that this was voted upon by our electorate, um, but also the fact that there's an exemption for local governments indicates that it's burdensome on our small businesses, and, and I feel like that this is going to be pretty detrimental. I've heard from several small business owners in our community indicating how much this is going to hurt them, um, and I think us realizing that we, and wanting to opt out given the, given the choice to do so, rec- we recognize that it's an undue burden, um, and so it's a little frustrating. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will move now to, uh, agenda item number three. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number twenty dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending sections twenty-two dash fifty-eight and twenty-two dash sixty-seven of the Wheatridge Code of Laws to establish an exemption from the city sales and use tax for carryout bag fees enacted by the state of Colorado. At issue, the Colorado State Legislature adopted a carryout bag fee effective January first, twenty-twenty-three, which by January first, twenty-twenty-four prohibits all retailers with a few specific exemptions from providing single-use plastic bags. Carryout bags are currently subject to local sales tax. As a home wheel city, Wheatridge is able to establish its own laws, including the ability to exempt from taxation certain goods and services. The attached ordinance enacts such an exemption for the city.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Uh, Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number twenty dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending sections twenty-two dash fifty-eight and twenty-two dash sixty-seven of the Wheatridge Code of Laws to establish an, an exemption from the city's sales and use tax for bag fees enacted by the state of Colorado on first reading or at a published public hearing set for Monday, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven p.m., as a virtual meeting and city council chambers, if allowed to be in person on that day per COVID-nineteen restrictions, and that it takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Uh, second by counsel, uh, by Mayor Protem Holtehn. Is there any discussion on the motion? Generated a lot of action there in the, in the council. Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
On motion, seconded by every member of council. The motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. That will take us to agenda item number four. Uh, once again, Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number twenty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at seventy-five twenty-five West Forty-Fourth Avenue from Commercial One to Mixed Use Commercial. MUC case number WZ dash twenty-two dash zero-eight. At issue, applicant requesting approval of a zone change from Commercial One to Mixed Use Commercial for property located seventy-five twenty-five West twenty, West Forty-Fourth Avenue. The zone change will result in zoning that matches surrounding zoning and enables redevelopment of the site by expanding permitted uses.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Uh, Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I move to recommend Council Bill number twenty-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at seventy-five twenty-five West Forty-Fourth Avenue from Commercial One to Mixed Use Commercial. MUC on first reading or at a published public hearing set for Monday, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven p.m., as a virtual meeting and city council chambers, if needed, to meet in person on that date per COVID-nineteen restrictions, and that it takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by, uh, Counselor Dozeman. Um, is there discussion on the motion? Or, uh, there is no discussion. Mr. Uh, clerk, please poll the council. Thank you.
Mr. Ohm, thank you. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to, uh, agenda item number five. Counselor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to approve the selection of public art for the improved Wadsworth Project to J-C-A-S Studios. At issue, the improved Wadworth, Wadsworth Project includes funding for public art. The process for selecting public art is defined in the Public Art Management Plan. For this process, a series of public art pieces proposed by the J-C-A-S Studios team have been commissioned. J-C-A-S Studios' proposal was selected by an appointed committee for recommendation to the Cultural Commission. The Cultural Commission reviewed the proposal and per the defined process would like to make recommendation to city council for acceptance and purchase. The purchase price of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars includes design, construction, installation, and documentation.
Thank you very much. This will be a, um, a motion of the council, and we're looking forward to it, so it is not quasi-judicial. So, Mr. Goff, do we have a, hopefully a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Manager's here.
I'm the manager. You demoted me, Pat.
What did I say? Parks, I'm sorry. Parks and Rec Director.
I'm just kidding. Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Karen O'Donnell, Director of Parks and Recreation, and it is my pleasure to introduce our public art consultant for the city, Kendall Peterson, with There Squared. She's gonna talk you through the public art process associated with the Wadsworth Widening Project and, um, ask for your support to move forward at the end. Kendall.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor.
Good morning. Good evening.
Nice to finally meet you in person. And, um, council, um, thank you very much for inviting me to, uh, talk a little bit about this project. I'm gonna move fairly quickly. Please interrupt me if you have questions. Um, it, it's hard to consolidate months of decision-making into this, uh, this short little presentation. Uh, Mayor Starker was our, um, on our selection panel, so please pipe in if you would like to.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if that's protocol or not, so, um, but anyway, um, you all know very much about the, um, whole purpose and need of the Wadsworth public, uh, of the, uh, the, sorry, the Wadsworth Project, but we're here to talk about the public art that it will go the way, go forward. The arrow? Sorry. Is that? Okay. Hmm. It's just working. Sorry. It happens to me all the time. That's not working. No. How about? Hmm. That's odd. Hold on for a sec. Let me see here. No, no, no. There we go. Oh, did it go? That's odd. Just click it? All right. So were you using, using the mouse, then? I always try to skip. I was using my, um, oh, it's so weird. It's with, when we, we share screen through Zoom, it won't click through now. That's a picture. Oh, now it works. Yeah, I was just, I, I can. Oh, gosh, sorry. There it goes. Okay. Try it. Okay. It's working now. It's ghost. Okay. Okay. So these are just the topics we'll cover very, very briefly. Um, first of all, you all know what's going on on Wadsworth. I, we, I actually just drove past it a couple days ago to check out the progress. Um, it's really exciting what's going on there, and the project is primarily, um, a street, you know, trying to make things safer and, uh, make it, uh, more easy for you to walk and ride down the street, but ultimately, the public art will serve as a gateway to your community, so that is, um, an exciting thing to be adding to the project. So this is our selection pro, uh, panel. Um, you can see that we had, um, a cultural commissioner, and then this is the required, um, group that we need to do for every, uh, selection that we do for public art. Uh, this was given to me at the early stages, so this is sort of a, an outlay of where, um, public art might be, um, uh, needed in, in parts of the project, so if you'll see, it's kind of hard to tell, but at the north entry on, um, Wadsworth, there is an area where we, uh, kind of conceived of having a gateway piece, a, a vertical piece of artwork, and then several areas on the median, the raised median, which kind of protects the artwork, and then further down on Wadsworth, there is an opportunity for possible mural on a noise wall that's being created in front of a retire, retirement community. So this is the sound wall location at the lower end of the project. It's about a hundred and forty feet long. Uh, so these are just some plans. So this shows the north end. There's a ramp that comes down, um, that connects the, um, trails from Clear Creek and the, and near the park, and then it'll come down, so there's a really nice area where you can have a sculpture, a tall sculpture, right here. All of these, uh, locations were, uh, discussed with the group, and we wanted to make sure that we had consensus that this is the areas that we should consider. So those were the three areas that went out to a, on a request for qualifications via callforentry.org. That is a, um, sort of an industry standard where public artists can apply for art, uh, opportunities around the nation. Um, we were giving Colorado artists preference. We did not wanna limit it just to Colorado artists because it's such a, a big splashy, um, uh, uh, commission, so we made sure that, um, Colo- Colorado artists were given preference, and the way we did that was sort of at every stage, we would look at where the artists were coming from and discuss, um, whether or not they were Colorado artists, and, um, and I also made sure that all of the Colorado artists with a certain, the way you go through it is you grade all these artists based on their portfolio, and we made sure that all the artists that were, uh, over a certain amount made it into our final consideration. Um, and we wanted to make sure that we gave the opportunity for artists to do one piece of the, either just the murals or the sculptural elements or the whole, the whole kit and caboodle. The idea being that we thought that one artist might be able to provide a whole kind of narrative along the boulevard, but we also wanted to give muralists an opportunity to do something that was a point and counterpoint art, artistic effect. So this has been kind of a long process. I think, um, we, we had lots of scheduling issues. Uh, Mayor Starker's a busy guy, um, so it was, it was, it started in, um, in April, and then this is kind of where we're at with the project itself, but you can see that we had four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars total budget, which is the one percent for public art as required by ordinance, um, and then we, uh, we subtracted a few items there for stipends to the artists. We always pay the artists for their proposals, and then, um, callforentry.org. So this is the timeline that we went through, so you can see we had many meetings. Um, I invited all the artists to, um, that were shortlisted to come to a virtual site visit, which was really fun. We did that via Zoom, and one of the staff members were able to show all the artists what was planned for the area, so they got all the documents they needed that way. So this is where we are now, so, uh, we just, uh, submitted this to cultural council on the ninth, and now we're coming to you all for approval to move forward to contract. So I'm just gonna really quickly go through the artists, and this is, it just happens to be in the order that they presented in. We selected seven artists or artist teams out of a hundred and fifty-seven, I think it was, different portfolios, so it took a lot of time for the arti, for the, for the selection members to go through and score each of these, so we, we were, it was a long process to get to this point. So, um, we brought back two, um, muralists and then, um, five other teams that would do the whole, the whole, um, corridor, um, ostensibly. So this is a local artist, she's out of Golden. Alexandra Pangburn, uh, she's a muralist. This was her proposal, and I won't go, um, into a whole lot of detail on these first ones just because they were not the selected artists. The one at the end was our selected artist. Alexandra's piece, um, recalls all the- Alexandra's piece recalls all the types of flora and fauna that you might find in the area, as well as some of the architectural details, if you can see in the background. This was another muralist. He is out of Florida. Jonathan proposed a piece that was based on sound and the idea that the sound wall would be providing a buffer, buffer for the retirement community behind, and also the idea that art can provide a way of buffering sound. So the, so the sort of infinity symbol in the back is actually a sound wave of this perfect harmonious sound that might sort of help people. It was a little, it was a little awkward, though, because they also had a sound piece, and this wasn't a sound piece, so there was a lot of discussion around that. This is a piece by P2 Studio. They're out of Indianapolis and Los Angeles. These guys did the whole, the whole corridor-wide project, so they proposed a mural up at the north, I'm sorry, at the south end. This had also flora and fauna that's local to the area. There was some discussion about whether or not Sand Hill cranes really come through the, the area, so that was an interesting conversation. But also, it's based on sort of this idea of threads, the threads of the community, and the idea that this thread that starts on the north, which is the upper left-hand corner sculpture for the gateway, would then continue through the medians, there's sort of these ribbons, colored ribbons that would go through the, through the medians and then end up at the mural. I think there were some concerns about climbing on the sculpture, as well as just the, the rigidity of the mural sculptures, but they, I think everybody appreciated their, their proposal. This is a proposal by Gordon Huther. He's out of Napa, California. He only proposed for sculptural elements, and these are elements that would be lit, all of these would be lit at night. That was very important to the group, but he actually showed them lit at night, and these are based on the Rocky Mountains, and these were colored perforated steel sculptures. This is a piece by Patrick Merrill, who's a local artist. He actually went to Wheat Ridge High School, and he is, he was also a semifinalist for the last project I brought to you all. This, he did sculpture only as well. It's just a very abstract piece, concentric circles made out of mirror-polished steel. And again, where, there were some concerns about just the, the connection to the site and how this will look when there's actually a railing on this, on this bike ramp that comes down. This was a second runner-up. This was a real favorite of the mayor's. This is Dewitt Godfrey. These are his pieces that he proposed for the entry area and, and also two of the median areas. He did not have a mural proposal. His pieces are always in this sort of, this realm. They're very abstract, and he likes the idea of playing with this sort of fluidity of what is actually really solid, which is Corten steel and the way these, these elements fit together and kind of, for lack of a better word, smoosh together and, and create these really interesting ovoid forms. The main, I think everybody really appreciated the proposal. I think that the only thing that may have been lacking was just a sort of psychic connection to the city of Wheat Ridge, but also there are a couple of other pieces by Dewitt in the, in Denver and some other neighboring cities, so there was concern that maybe we've seen others, and they wanted something really original. So the final proposal that we had was the winning proposal. This is J-CAS Studios, and J-CAS was a made-up name. It's for individual artists that come from the neighborhoods around here. Colin Parson is the director of the art, art portion of the Arvada Center. He is a Wheat Ridge native, also a Wheat Ridge farmer. And then a couple of other artists that kind of banded together. This is the first time that they proposed for a, a project like this, so they basically just put, pulled together and, and put this proposal together as a first time. So the cosecha means harvest in Spanish, and they started with this concept of these microscopic sort of slices through, these are slices through a wheat stalk, and so this is the microscopic level, and what they do is they're taking this as sort of the, the idea of what they want to do for their mural. There's a little concern about the visibility of this on the mural wall. We'll have to be doing some sort of engineering of this to make sure it's super visible, but basically you use, you can see this is a mock-up that they had in their, in their studio. It's lit from behind, and the one thing that was really interesting is that they're doing zero waste in all of their, in their proposals. So the idea is that these pieces that they cut out of this, this, they become the positives for the other sculptures that they're making, so all of the steel will be used in these sculptures. So this is the mural wall. It's really hard to see. These are sculptural elements based on those pieces that they cut out. These are celery, celery seeds, kind of, these, they're sort of abstracted celery seeds. These are abstracted wheat berries. Some people took issue with this shape, that they kind of thought it looked like horns or something that was a little bit too stark for the, for the boulevard, so we might be engine, sort of switching this up a little bit, too. Maybe we'll just do celery seeds. We don't know yet. We're going to be working through that. That's the whole point of these proposals, is that they're not set until we figure out exactly where they'll go. And then these are the proposed, these are based on very abstracted carnations. Of course, you are the carnation city, and we had, we had said no carnations, but these actually are pretty lovely, I think, and all of these will be lit at night. They'll be very tall. I think the idea was that they would poke up above the ramp so that you would actually see them sort of almost like, like buds of, of wildflowers poking up, like when you, in the spring when they come out. So those were the three elements, and this is some of the comments, and, and Mayor Starker, please feel free to give your ideas, too, but I think they, that the group really liked the zero-waste concept. I think it was really something that's neat, and we would love to be able to promote that when we start to roll out the sculpture. I think it's, it's, it's also really cool that they're all local artists and, and that we're giving these emerging artists a chance at a really cool project. They all have very deep connections to Colorado and to Wheat Ridge, and I thought they made a really great presentation about the whole idea of the harvest and the, the historic harvest that came from here, but also the idea that we're harvesting the community and, and using these projects to kind of harvest a new life for, for Wheat Ridge. Lighting will be key, and we, we might have some opportunities to increase this project into, onto the bus stops. We have to do some, some questioning on whether or not that will happen, so. In the end, there were six votes for the J-CAS Studios, one vote for Dewitt, and so the democracy was the, the J-CAS to move forward, but I think everyone was very excited and very pleased with all the results that we had from this, all the proposals, so.
Well, Kendall, thank you very much. Great presentation, and I want to sort of recognize Kendall for leading a great process. It was really, as you can see, really thoroughly done and a pretty engaging, a number, you know, great, wide variety of artists and a great interest in the project. She did a great job in, in leading that. I think it's going to be a really outstanding project when we get it, get it in real life, and, and I'm really excited to see it happen. So before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite anyone in the public to come forward and speak on this. I have no one signed up, but if, if you'd like to speak on this, you may do so now, either in person or online.
Don't see anybody.
No see anybody online. Okay, well, I will go to questions from council. Councilwoman Nosler Beck.
This is the coolest. That was the coolest. I love how creative it got with the, the slicing of the wheat stalk, and that's what you're looking at. It like, is a connection to everything, and also, my family's farm was at 45th and Wadsworth, and they grew celery.
No way.
And so it is historically accurate, too, and I just, from the bottom of my heart, thanks for all the work that went into this, and thanks so much to these incredible artists that are homegrown for stepping up and putting together a proposal that's just so Wheat Ridge. I'm, I like, if there's anything we can do to make sure that this just turns out just like as presented, let us know, or me know how I can be helpful. This is so great.
Thanks for your comments. That, there, I'm going to give it all back to them because they are over the moon. I, like, I have to call them tonight, so.
I have like a bunch of old photos of our celery farm and stuff, so I'd love to send those over to them so they can.
Please, yeah, contact Karen.
They also grew peonies, so, and there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone who worked on this. I echo Ms. Nosler Beck's comments. I mean, this is really exciting. First of all, it's just exciting to think of the Wadsworth Project being done.
I agree.
That got me excited, too. But I think, you know, a couple of things really excited me. One is, it's just, it is really thrilling to see such competitive proposals coming out from our, our own community, that we have such talent here that is going up against talent across the country, and I couldn't agree more. It's, it's, you know, it's both abstracted, but it's also just so deeply rooted in our identity as a community, so it feels to me it's really a beautiful bridge from our past to our future, and, and I hope, I hope we do a good job of educating our community about what these pieces are, what they mean, and making, you know, because it's not going to be, I, I have a botany degree, so I knew exactly what that picture was. That's sclerachma. But, but I, I hope we, as a city, as those come in, we, we're doing things to, you know, write, write articles in the paper, let people know, and let that be an ongoing, like, cultural conversation. That's what art is good for, so.
Yeah, the Cultural Commission had the same, had the same desire. They would love to do some sort of video or something like that, kind of just educating people on why zero waste and why they had, chose these different elements. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that so that the, the art program can have a little, a little, you know, you can refer people to that, so.
Awesome. I do actually, I am leading up to a question. Before I do that, though, I just, we don't talk enough about the Cultural Commission up here. They're doing such exciting work in our community, and this is also just an example of the cafe process, you know, bringing, bringing the best foot forward. Could somebody just remind us how these projects are funded in our city?
I'm, sorry, you can go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I think we should give some credit to your peers many, many years ago when they created the Public Art Fund, because it has taken a while for the money to build up, but there's two different pots of money, and the pot of, the money that's going for this project is, is 1% of any public project. Wadsworth is a, is a city project, state project. 1% of the budget is set aside for public art, so the first phase of Wadsworth is about $45 million, so there's about $450,000 for this project, and we're, we're lucky. We have, we'll talk about it in budget presentation here in a couple of weeks, but we have numerous projects slated. We're working on the TOD site next for another piece of art, as you all approved a piece out of the Clerker Crossing, so really excited about these opportunities.
Fantastic. Well, I am glad we are a 1% for arts community, and it'll make our legacy even stronger. Thank you, everyone, for your work, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time on that.
A real pleasure, thrilled, honored for me to sit on it. Any other, you know, questions or comments before we go to a motion? Okay, seeing none, Councilor Hutchinson, may I have a motion on item number five, please?
I move to approve the selection of public art for the improved Wadsworth project to J-CAS Studios.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilor Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, we will go to our next agenda item, number six. Councilor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 40-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects Fund to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $4,251,442 and to award a contract and subsequent payments to Goodland Construction Incorporated in not to exceed the amount of $7,313,186.74 for street improvements at the Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail station area. At issue, public infrastructure improvements at the Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail station area include reconstruction of 52nd Avenue, Tabor Street, Ridge Road, adjacent intersections, and improvements to Valley Water District Utilities on 52nd Avenue. Staff is recommending that the lowest responsive bidder, Goodland Construction Incorporated, be awarded a contract in the amount of $7,313,186.74.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council, not quasi-judicial, and Mr. Goff, give a staff presentation.
Yes, Lauren Mikulak, our interim community development director.
Okay. Ms. Mikulak.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. This project feels like it's a long time coming because it was part of that 2016 bond, so I want to speak just for a moment to the timeline because the community and council have been very patient in seeing this project delivered. As a reminder, the goal of this project is to provide continuous sidewalks on segments of 52nd, Tabor and Ridge in the northwest sub-area of our community, improving the street conditions really for all users up there. The bulk of our neighborhood engagement and design took place in 2019, and by 2020, we had partnerships finalized and formalized with Jeffco, Arvada, and CDOT. As you know, we put the project in pause with the pandemic and picked up earlier this year, finalizing the design and advertising the bid. This resolution awards construction to Goodland, and the next item includes an agreement with Valley Water so that we can improve water lines at the same time. We do think construction could actually start by year-end, and will take about a year. We know that a lot of our public engagement happened a few years ago, so we do plan to partner as a city with the contractor to make sure that there's adequate communication to both the neighborhood and the public about impacts during that process. I'm here tonight with my engineering colleagues, Mark and Steve, if you've got any questions for any of us.
Okay, thank you.
Just available for questions?
You're available?
The only, the only other thing I would add is that we did street with back on January 10th of 2022, so we're within the one-year period of being able to execute a construction contract. We only have a year to do that once we designate street with, so we did it twice, we don't have to do it a third time, so I just wanted to let everybody know that that was not going to be a thing.
Thank you for, thank you for getting that done. Before we go to questions from council, I'd like to open it to the public. If you, I have no one signed up to speak. If you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now, and you may do so online, and I'll ask our clerk if anyone has come forward to speak. Okay, we'll go to questions from council. For staff, any, any questions? Okay, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Mikulak. Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution number 40-2022, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 Renewal Wheat Ridge Bond Projects Fund to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $4,251,442 and to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to Goodland Construction in an amount not to exceed $7,313,186.74 for street improvements at the Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail station area.
Second.
Motion and a second by Council, Councilor Hoppe. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilor Mayor Protim Holtein.
My comment is short. Yay sidewalks.
Okay. Any follow-up to that? Okay, seeing no, no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to agenda item number seven. Councilor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Resolution number 41-2022, a resolution approving an agreement with the Valley Water District regarding water line improvements in 57, 52nd Avenue. Whoa, I'm rusty, sorry, everybody. At issue, public infrastructure improvements at the Wheat Ridge Ward commuter rail station area include reconstruction of 52nd Avenue, Tabor Street, Ridge Road, adjacent intersections, and improvements to Valley Water District Utilities in 52nd Avenue. As part of the reconstruction of 52nd Avenue, the Valley Water District needs to reconstruct a portion of their water main. The water main is in conflict with the proposed storm sewer and needs to be relocated. An agreement is needed between the city and Valley Water to outline each entity's responsibilities and to detail a reimbursement obligation.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't. We don't have anything to add. As, as Ms. Mikulak mentioned, this is part of the street projects at the Wheat Ridge Ward Station, so if you have any questions, listen.
All right. Before we go to questions from council, we'll go to the public for any questions or input on this item. I don't have anyone signed up. If you're online and want to speak on this, raise your hand, and I don't see anyone doing that, so we'll go to questions from council. Councilperson Dozeman.
Thank you. So this is-
An agreement is needed between the city and Valley Water to outline each entity's responsibilities and to detail a reimbursement obligation.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't. We don't have anything to add. As, as Ms. Mikulak mentioned, this is part of the street projects at the Wheat Ridge Ward Station, so if you have any questions, listen.
All right, before we go to questions from council, we'll go to the public for any questions or input on this item. I don't have anyone signed up. If you're online and want to speak on this, raise your hand, and I don't see anyone doing that, so we'll go to questions from council. Counsel, person Dozeman.
Thank you. So this is just for staff. As we are increasing development or going to be seeing more development, what is the process of engaging with, like, water districts and sanitation districts during the planning process?
Sure. There's two primary methods. So first, any development proposal, whether it's a zone change or a site plan, gets sent on referral to those agencies when we get that first submitted, so that we can understand their capacity and any infrastructure requirements. And then additionally, we meet with all outside agencies, including water and sanitation, on a quarterly basis, to let them know of things that may not yet be on referral but are coming down the pipe, so. And maybe there's a third way. When we do subarea planning, so when we did the northwest subarea plan a number of years ago, we meet with utility agencies to make sure that if we have a vision that increases density in sort of a more holistic way, that the districts are aware and can plan appropriately for those kinds of upgrades.
Do we anticipate needing upgrades, and do we have any funds set aside in case we need to subsidize those?
Yeah, I don't know specifically if Valley's planning to upsize. Mr. Westberg might know that in more detail.
They're, they're not upsizing, they're just replacing a very old line, and it's in the way of our storm sewer. We had to get everything to fit in there. In addition to the things that Lauren mentioned, we also, as a part of our normal design process, once we get conceptual plans done, we send those out on referral to all the dry and wet utilities to do any kind of coordination, which is why you, you have been seeing us get them involved in rebuilding lines on 29th Avenue, rebuilding lines on 52nd, rebuilding lines in Wadsworth. So we're trying to partner with them, and it saves the districts a lot of money when they can partner with us, because they're not having to pay for paper removal restoration and traffic control and stuff. So they're, they're getting their lines replaced for a lot less money than they would if they were doing it themselves.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mayor Pro Tim Holtein.
This is just a little bit tangential to Ms. Dozeman's question, but Patrick, remind me, don't we have on future agenda items a discussion of our utilities and our utility districts, our special?
We will. It's not scheduled yet, but our new public works director, Maria DeAndrea, is going to come in front of council on a study session to talk about kind of our relationship with all of our different districts. I don't think, a lot of people in the community don't understand that we're not necessarily a full-service city. I know Mr. Dahl hates when we, we say we're not full service, because we are, we provide full service for everything, except for utilities. And we have seven water, seven sanitary districts, and five or six water districts, and three fire districts, so we're going to have a discussion about all that in the future and how we work together.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just to Ms. Dozeman's point, I think it's increasingly important for all of us to understand that, so thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution number 41-2022, a resolution approving an agreement with the Valley Water District regarding water line improvements in 52nd Avenue.
Second.
A motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number eight. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is a motion to approve installation of a traffic calming device on 31st Place between Union Street and Vivian Street in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. At issue, the residents at 31st Place petitioned the city to address traffic concerns for the street segment from Union Street to Vivian Street. In accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, the city met with residents at neighboring, at a neighborhood meeting, and subsequently discussed and devised a plan to mitigate traffic issues. The residents then secured a petition with the necessary number of property owner signatures supporting the installation of a speed hump. Is that different than a bump? It is, okay, all right, a speed hump, in accordance with the NTMP policy, and hereby seeking approval for implementation.
Thank you. This will be a motion from the council, not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Steve, do you have a presentation, or are you just here for questions?
I don't, we just have a couple of talking points.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Steve Nguyen here, our engineering manager.
Okay, Mr. Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am presenting item number eight, and that is 31st, 31st Place on the west side of town, a segment from between Union and Vivian Street. Upon request, the letter from the resident to be considering the NTMP program, we are met with the residents, talked about traffic issues, and plans to address those. And we have sent out the plan, and residents have, in support of the plan, and moved forward with the petition with 80%. And so we are at a stage where we are seeking approval for the plans. We did receive one comment in advance through Wheat Ridge Speaks in the comment that a resident think that having four signs on the mitigation plan is excessive. I'm going to refer back to the exhibit, exhibit in the attachment. You may see that there are two signs that related to the speed hump. Those are required to be, you know, accompanied with the speed hump. The other two signs are for warning curves. I think that is in response to a complaint where the resident complains about speeding around the curves, and those signs are for that purpose. The city staff will not include those installation if the resident collectively do not want those signs. I do have one of our NTMP engineer, program engineer on call, just in case you have further questions on that. So with that said, I'm going to open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I'll open this up to the public. Once again, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you'd like to speak on this, you may do so now, either online by raising your hand or in person, and I don't see anybody coming forward. So we'll go to questions from council. Mayor Pro Tim Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, so can you share a little bit about what type of data you collect in order to identify what the issue is on the block and what the best remedy is for it?
The data we typically collect is the volumes on that street and the speeds. And our usual duration is about 48 hours, that two-fold day counts. And we typically do it between Tuesday to Thursday. That typically represent a kind of a pattern, traffic pattern on A Street, whether to show whether we see a problem or not. The two-day we use is that sometime it has some fluctuations, so the day two is going to help us to, and typically, they behave about in the same range of volume. That kind of help validate whether we have a solid data collection or not.
So in a location like this, so you're looking at the, the volume, and then what type of speeds are indicative of needing some sort of speed control?
As far as speed, the way that the device collected is to put it in cohorts. We would have cohorts like between 5 and 10 mile per hour, how many cars at certain hour would travel in that range. And the different range, we have from 5 mile up to 100 mile per hour, if they can physically pull that off. And when those, those data points are collected, just put in the bin for us to kind of assess how excessive speeding that a street would experience.
And so is it just, do they look at, like, average against what the posted speed limit is? I mean, what's the?
We look at average, but, you know, the technical term we use is to call the 85th percentile speed. It is, it is being looked at as 85% of the driving population driving at or below that speed. So if I see a readout of 85th percentile speed of 35 mile per hour in a 25 mile per hour zone, that tells me that 85% of the driving population is driving at 35 mile per hour or less. I know it's hard to grasp, but I, you can always look at it as, or call the average peak speed.
Right, so.
So, so in a, I'm going to finish it, I'll hopefully get a good understanding on it. If I see a 85th percentile speed of 30 mile per hour in a 25 mile per hour zone, we see that as a problem with speeding.
Got it, great. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff on this? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Steve. Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may. I move to approve installation of a traffic calming device on 31st Place between Union Street and Vivian Street in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counsel Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Stites, Counselor Stites.
I just want to thank Mr. Nguyen. This is my neighborhood. We get a lot of complaints, probably have for 25 years in that, on that neighborhood, and especially with so many new young children moving in on that street. This has been a pretty big concern, and that there's two blind curves there, so really appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number nine. Mayor Pro Tim Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve installation of a traffic calming device on Lamar Street between 39th Avenue and 41st Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. At issue, residents on Lamar Street petitioned the city to address traffic issues for the street segment from 39th Avenue to 41st Avenue. In accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, the city met with residents at a neighborhood meeting and subsequently discussed and devised a plan to mitigate traffic issues. The residents then secured a petition with the necessary number of property owner signatures supporting the installation of a speed hump in accordance with the NTMP policy, and are hereby seeking approval for implementation.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff, any staff presentation on this one?
A few brief comments.
Sure.
Mr. Nguyen.
This segment is asking for the same, and this is Lamar, between 38th and 41st on the east side of town. I've gone through the process by a meeting with the resident, talked about issues, and devised a plan for a solution, and they have moved forward with the 80% in favor of petition, and therefore, we are seeking for approval tonight. This is a straight stretch with one speed hump installation and related sign, very straightforward.
Thank you. Before we go to questions from council, once again, opening up to the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you want to speak, now you may do so. Okay, no one's coming forward, so any questions of council for staff on this item? Seeing none? Oh, excuse me, Counselwoman Weaver.
I, I would just like, would you please clarify the difference between a hump and a bump? Because I just learned, and, and I think it's actually helpful for our audience.
I could go technical on this, but.
Yeah, no need. 30, 30 seconds is fine.
I'll make it easy. Differentiation between a speed hump and a speed bump. If you may trouble in shopping parking lot where the speed hump is very narrow and abrupt, that's a speed bump. A speed hump that we put on residents to is 14 feet wide, it has a parabola shape. You can negotiate over it, I think, between 15 and 20 mile per hour without jolting your car, but you can't do that over a speed bump, which you typically see in a shop, parking, shopping center parking lot. That's, that's the best way I can kind of differentiate it for you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Holtein, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve installation of a traffic calming device on Lamar Street between 39th Avenue and 41st Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number 10. Counselor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Yes. Sorry, I was just, we were talking about my explanation of speed hump and speed bump, and it was hump and bump. That's how I described it.
That's a good, that's a good visual, thank you.
Item number 10. A motion to approve the purchase and installation for the city's core switches for a total of $165,047.25. At issue, the city's core switches, which facilitate internet access to every city facility, are approaching end of life. If a failure occurred, all city, all city facilities would be affected, causing severe service interruption.
We wouldn't want that to happen. This will be a motion of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on this item?
Yeah, briefly, Alex Shaker, administrative services director.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Goff and Mr. Mayor, Jesse Dubin, our new IT manager is also on. If we, if you have any technical questions, but we couldn't agree more, we wouldn't want that to happen. When Jesse started, he did an evaluation of our gear and learned that these are nearing end of life, and that the most troublesome thing is with the supply chain issues as a result of the pandemic. The gear is 9 to 12 months out, and we've had a vacant network administrator position almost for the whole year since the end of February. And so we can reallocate those salary savings to pull the trigger now, as opposed to make that wait until next year. I know we're nearing the end of the year, but it's, I think it's a good example, a good opportunity to get a jump on it. So we'd like to reallocate those salary savings. This does not require supplemental. We'd like to move ahead with your permission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, we'll open it up to the public. No one signed up, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so, and online also. And I don't see anyone coming forward. So we will go to questions from council. Any questions? Okay, Mayor Pro, or Counselor Hoppy, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the purchase and installation of the city's core switches for a total of $165,047.25.
Second.
We have a motion, second by Counsel Stites. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Weaver.
I just want to clarify that since we were talking about humps and bumps earlier, when I first read core switch, I, of course, pictured that some, there was some place in the city where there was a giant switch. Speaking of being a full-service city, that we could just turn everything off.
That'd be nice.
These are.
Did you ask me a question?
No, is, is there a switch?
A switch? You know, it's really funny. I asked our, our IT manager, can you show me what this piece looks like? And it's, it's a really big box. But yes.
It is?
No, but I'd really like you to think there is. Exactly, it's like the Christmas lights. Yes. Jesse is sitting at home right now laughing really hard.
You wouldn't tell me where that was anyway, so it's fine.
Oh, you can't get there.
Thank you.
Are there any further question, discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we will move now to agenda item number 11. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve appointment to current vacancy on liquor licensing authority board. At issue, one of the city's liquor licensing authority board members in District 4 has moved out of the state of Colorado. This has created a vacancy on this board.
Thank you. This is a, will be a motion of the council, and we let, we go to the senior member. So Ms. Dozeman, are you ready to make a motion on this item?
Yes, I moved to appoint Anthony Romano to the liquor licensing authority board, term ending 3/2024.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Would clerk please poll the council?
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I think that gets us through the agenda items. Let's get back to the starting page. And we will go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items. It's going to be here, before we know it, holiday lighting ceremony. It's coming up. I didn't put the date down. What's the date? Who knows? December 3rd, 3 o'clock, 3 to 6, at the Green on 38th Avenue, so hope to see you all there. I was out touring, my sister was in town touring around all the great things going on in Wheat Ridge, and drove by and saw that Dutch Brothers is open, if you haven't been out there, so. If you have your gift card, I think you all got a gift card maybe, so go out and enjoy a Dutch Brothers coffee. And then you all should have received your 2023 proposed budget last week, as we noted in an email that we sent out to you all last week also. Reading the budget message is probably the best thing, so don't get freaked out about how big it is. If you're getting freaked out, just read the budget message, please.
Just that second, second cup of coffee and.
Best, or, or, or.
Something, or something else.
But that's the best place to start. The budget message really gives you the overview of the full budget, so please, if you're. of the full budget, so please, if you're running out of time, please concentrate on that. But we also encourage you to, if you need a tutorial of the budget, or if you have questions before our budget presentation on November 21st, please call Ally or myself, and we'd be happy to sit down with you, or just answer any questions. The public can access, access the electronic version of the budget, budget on What's Up Wheat Ridge, and, or they can see, review a hard copy in the city clerk's office. So, anybody wants to see that, they can, and we look forward to presenting it to you on November 21st. And speaking of public art, and we did briefly mention the Wheat Ridge Ward Public Art piece, we will be looking for another elected official to sit on that selection committee. So if you're interested, please reach out to Karen O'Donnell, and we haven't started creating that committee yet, I don't think, but every selection committee does have an elected official, so if you're interested, let her know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. City Attorney's Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, we'll go to elected officials matters, and I noticed we have our treasurer with us, but I'm first going to go to our city clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick. Clerk Kirkpatrick.
Last Friday, I attended a theatrical presentation by the Wheat Ridge, I forgot what they call them, it's just, uh, city players or something like that, out on 38th Avenue near Sheridan. They're in a strip mall. They're a fledgling organization who presented the ancient Greek comic tragedy, Lysistrata. And if you don't want it, it's about the women of a particular Greek city decide to keep their men home from war by going on a sex strike when they come back from their latest deployment, I guess we'll call it. There was a great deal of good acting. I highly recommend that you go and check them out. They're a fledgling group. You are not going to see something that recently appeared on Broadway or off, 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 off-Broadway. But it is a new artistic opportunity in the city, and I wanted to mention it because I think it's important we support these efforts as they try to get started. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and looking forward to having good theater come to Wheat Ridge. So really glad that they've got this. This is a new space for them in the, at the Chase on 38th Avenue. So, Mr. Miller, anything, anything we should have a report on?
I'm lucky to have the council board here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. We're, once again, glad, glad to have you with us. And let's see, we'll start with, start with our counselors and Councilor Hutchinson.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Councilor Nosler Beck.
Um, I wanted to just, it's been a long time since we've all seen each other, and so wanted to thank everybody that came out for trunk or treat, and I think it's been that long since we've seen each other. It was a great event, and lots and lots of participation, so special shout out to Local Works for that event. And I also wanted to thank the community for all the work that we put into really elevating the issues that concerned us about the school closures. For a lot of us, the vote didn't go the way that we wanted on November 10th. They're going to be closing three schools in our articulation area, but one thing that really just came through was how our community comes together when the tough stuff hits. And so, in true Wheat Ridge fashion, I think we're harnessing that, that energy, and we know that there's more closures on the horizon, and so there still is a large group of community members and family members still talking about what we can do to help. And so, we're going to be talking about how our school resources are funded, and starting to dive into some of those conversations. And I invite folks to, to follow on Facebook, Save Our Community, Save Our Schools, to see how you can get engaged earlier on. And just really, from the bottom of my heart, thanks everybody for your support during this tough time, and also that Coalition can be a really great resource for families who are trying to figure out what to do next, and talk about how we keep some of our, our kids together, moving to new schools and, and all of that. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Council Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Goff beat me to it, but I want to welcome Dutch Brothers to District Three in Wheat Ridge. I stopped by there this morning, got myself a fairly large energy drink, so I'm still going. I'm good. I might be up until about midnight or so.
Grab the budget.
Yeah, I'm ready. But I also want to thank Guy Namiash for putting on the final, gosh, it has been a couple weeks, the final art on the farm of the season. I guess that was back in late October, so thank you to him for all the work he's done to promote the arts over the last few years, and we look forward to seeing that again next summer. And then, just to echo what Councilwoman Nosler Beck said, the vote did not go our way, but I do appreciate, and I am in awe of some of the people in our community at how phenomenally intelligent and respectful, and how they conducted themselves through this process, and it was a very frustrating process, and so I appreciate them. I also want to thank the city of Wheat Ridge. We tend to get hit a lot when somebody's upset about something, but our process for getting feedback from our citizens and, and how we conduct our meetings is apparently not the, the model for everybody else, and we don't limit public comment. We, we may limit to three minutes, but we allow anybody to come here and speak. They don't have to sign up beforehand. Jeffco does not do that. They limit it to only a few people allowed to speak. They limit the time that you're allowed to speak. They also make you sign up online, which is, I think, Councilwoman Hutchinson has pointed out several times, not everybody has access to the internet. It's not an age thing, it's also a demographic thing, it's also an income thing. So, it's something that I hope Jeffco and Jeffco Public Schools looks at, their, their processes for equity. Starting school board meetings at 3:30 in the afternoon and 5:00 PM in the afternoon, when parents work is just not an equitable thing. So, I really do appreciate how Wheat Ridge conducts its business, and I appreciate our staff and the other elected officials. And I do want to thank all the other council people who showed up, whatever, three weeks ago at Wheat Ridge High School to support our schools. I think that was something that was really important, so, thank you. Oh, by the way, we have holidays coming up. The mayor did the proclamation for small business Saturday, but if you can find your holiday gifts in Wheat Ridge, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge, please.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to mention that the Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Business Association is having their November Biz Mix tomorrow at Five Fridges Farm, and that is from 5 to 7 PM. So if you're looking to connect with local businesses in Wheat Ridge, go to WheatRidgeBiz.com and sign up and register to attend that tomorrow.
Tomorrow or Wednesday?
Is it, it is Wednesday. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's been, it's been way too long. I think we're all a little rusty. I'm, I'm glad to be back, and thank you for the correction. Appreciate it. And I also wanted to commend Councilmembers Nosler Beck and Councilmember Stites in their efforts to really try to save our schools from school closure. I remember being in that position in 2017, and it was a very emotional and challenging one, and they really stepped up and, you know, represented us at the helm, and they're at two impacted schools, so I know that that affects them and their families, as well as hundreds of others of families in our community, so it's going to be a long road. I know, for me personally, it's really hard to trust an organization that really fumbled this process so terribly, and again, I think that we have come a really long way in building that trust and that rapport with our community, and we have a robust public input process that I really appreciate here in the city of Wheat Ridge, and I wish other organizations would model it. But as Councilmember Nosler Beck and Stites have stated, we have a lot of work to do in our community, and, and I was also in complete and utter awe of how articulate and thoughtful some of the community members were in, in all of these impacted schools, and how they showed up and they engaged, and they really put on a really good fight. And so, I'm, I'm sorry to see that the outcome is what it is. I think that this will be hurtful to our community moving forward, but as long as we stay engaged in the conversation as to what happens next, I think we have the potential to move it in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
It's just great to see everyone after a month, and I just want to thank the city for expanding my knowledge on a few important issues tonight. So, thank you, and I look forward to seeing you all again next time.
I know geometry is one of your strong suits, so you can go home. Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you. Past couple weeks have been tough, as we've heard from the council members. I do want to kind of get ahead of what we're going to probably talk about come January. I don't want to wait until January to have the discussions about what our community needs, and so I'm not sure how I crack that nut, but I think that we, you know, I don't know if we need to have some type of study session, because it really does affect the community of how those schools are going to be repurposed and how they're going to fit in our neighborhoods. We've all heard tonight about traffic issues, and so it's gonna, it's gonna be a careful consideration, and we need, I think, to be fair to the, our community, the, the citizens need a lot of time to kind of buy into, I'm sure there's probably going to be a period of mourning, but they're going to need some time to take everything in and, and come up with some ideas. And I don't know when that appropriate time is, but I don't, I don't want to wait until January to then, city council is starting to, I don't know if anybody agrees with that.
I'd second that, if we were putting that on a study session agenda.
Okay. And then, other than that, I did attend, it's been a long time, and I think this was probably after our break, that I attended the Wheat Ridge Police Annual Dinner with the mayor. We had a really good turnout there, and it's really important to understand the, the sacrifices that our police officers have to make, not, not just themselves, but to their families too. It's really kind of, it's heartbreaking, but it's also, you know, it's really important, if, if you haven't, to be at these ceremonies and to, you know, hear these oaths that the police officers have to take. You know, I, I kind of wish I could hear more of them, because it really is humbling to hear that. And on another note, for several years, I don't know if the secret's out or not, but I've been very happy that I can go to Wheat Ridge Poultry Online and get my turkey reserved, and, and, you know, get the right size and everything, and they sell it quick, but that's a, that's a wonderful service that, and I can schedule what day I'm going to pick it up, so, thank you.
Hopefully, we're not broadcasting far and wide. Okay. Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we were here last, Porchlight Family Justice Center had their very first Be the Light Gala, and it was super fantastic and a lot of fun, and I appreciate some of the folks that came to support that. Mr. Miller, Councilwoman Dozeman, Ally Shak, and then also some sponsors from our counselors too. I really, boy, I really worked you guys over. Ms. Nosler Beck and Corey Stites, uh, sponsored. So I just wanted to say I really appreciate it. It was a very first time one, and it was awesome. Tomorrow night, Wheat Ridge High School is having their eighth grade student showcase from 6:30 to 8:00, and this is an opportunity for students that are looking, that are shopping their high schools, basically, to come and learn about Wheat Ridge High School. There will be tables there from our Stem and Steen, there will be tables for choir, there will, my girls will be there for softball, and, you know, the boys soccer who just won league. So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of really fantastic things to check out there, so all of the, like, activities and sports clubs and all of the academic clubs will all be there. So I think that it's a really great time. Take your kiddo over there, tell your neighbors about it. We have a new administration over at that high school, and I cannot tell you how absolutely fantastic it has been over there. So, check it out. And other than that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been so long since we've been in, been in here. A couple things. First of all, I just want to clarify, Councilor Ohm's request for a study session. Can you just clarify what, what it is that you want to cover in that study session?
I, yeah, I, I think we're going to have ideas of what, how these schools could transition, and what I want to know is what would be appropriate in the zoning, you know, because we're, we're not going to change the zoning, and what can we do? And it's, I think some of these are going to be tough, especially like Wilmore Davis, I know is very interior, and so it's definitely not a commercial type entity, but, you know, it's a space, what are we going to do with that space? And, and some ideas, and I, I want to have that somewhat, my, my intent is to try to have that somewhat vetted before we actually have to sit down with Jeffco in January, so that we have an idea of how we can kind of facilitate and direct what that vision is.
And, so Patrick, I just want to check, do we have staff capacity to have that study session?
Yeah, I was just looking at the calendar. I think it's more the capacity issue is, is actual meetings, study session meetings before January. I mean, you and I can talk about it on Wednesday on a specific date, but there's not a lot of study sessions before January, and then we get into January and February, there's a lot of study sessions canceled because of holidays, but I think we can figure out a date, maybe after a regular meeting.
Okay, yeah, we can talk about that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ohm. Appreciate that.
Can I just add something to, to that study session in that I'm, I'm hopeful that if we are discussing that, we can talk about, like, safe crossings and with the new routes to the schools. For example, Wilmore Davis, the new school will be Stevens Elementary, and we'll have to cross 287. Wadsworth, sorry. And so I just want to make sure that that's part of the, the conversation, too.
I think that's a good idea, because we've got an email, at least one, from the principal at Prospect Valley, asking us to do something about the traffic on 32nd and some of the issues that are already going on there. So, maybe if we can add that to that discussion, and I don't know, maybe we can get somebody from the school district to come. I don't know that we've made...
This is getting bigger and bigger and bigger.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess my point is, yeah, it's getting bigger, so I just don't think we can turn this around in the next couple of weeks. If, if you want to add all these things, it's gonna, it's gonna be a couple of months down the road.
Even if it's early January or mid-January, I don't know when their process starts, so...
I'd, I'd like to propose that we take the land use issue as the standalone for, like, the repurposing of the sites for our most, like, sort of triage urgent issue, and then what are the accommodations we need to make as a city to, you know, recognize that we've got different travel patterns for, you know, people walking, people riding their bikes. And maybe that can either be wrapped into the, the update to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, which I believe is going to come in front of us in early 2023. But are you guys okay if we, we recognize that they're both important but slightly separate issues? Okay, great, thank you. All right, my updates. Let's see here. We heard for a second time tonight, this is not my update, Ms. Rekka came in to talk to us about the licensing of the gun shop, and I believe the city has communicated with her, but I just want to clarify on record, what, what is the status and, and what is the process for that business to get its license?
We did communicate with her, and I, I believe we communicate with all of you also on the status of the business. I honestly don't know if the business has received a business license yet. We can check and let you know. There is no, it's, it's a, it's a use by right in that zone district, and they just have to apply for a business license. There's no regulations in the city on, on distance requirements for that type of use from, from parks or schools, so there's nothing that we can do to deny that license at this point unless there's any other issues with, with, with the business, you know, that, that would allow us to deny a license.
Okay, thank you. Then, on the topic of the Neighborhood Transportation Management Program, I just mentioned that that is scheduled for an update at some point, hopefully in the first quarter of next year, for us to talk about revising that. And I think tonight's study slash, or tonight's agenda items, to me, were a reminder of the importance of revisiting that and looking sort of holistically as a city at priority corridors that are problematic corridors, especially around our schools and parks, where we've got a lot more vulnerable road users, and really taking a look at what are some more sort of proactive and, I think, a diverse set of tools that we can use to make sure that our, our streets are safe for everyone, and I think really, like, prioritizing our schools is part of that. I happen to really benefit tremendously from the amazing infrastructure around Wilmore Davis. Davis School, which I think has benefited from some founding families in our city that advocated for really robust infrastructure. And there are like crossing signals and raised medians, and it is very safe in my neighborhood to cross streets because of some good school advocacy, so I'm looking forward to that conversation. And then, then my petty grievances, because election season's over. I would love to request some gummy bears up here. Sorry. I am like, yeah, so I'm just putting in a word for gummy bears on the dais. And then, then just a funny little thing, but every time I look at Mr. Ohm and his poor microphone without a little thingy, do we have any more of these little thingies? Yeah. 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 Yeah.
What are you guys doing to them? What are you, are you eating them? Are they gummy there? Don't eat your little-
Yeah.
We'll give you some new ones, yep.
But in all seriousness, I have missed the space and missed talking about the city that we all love and live in, and when, when we're not up here having these conversations, you know, it's, a lot still happens in our city, and I just am really impressed with our staff. And the holidays are coming, things are going to get a little crazy, but it's good to see you guys again, and I'll look forward to seeing everyone next Monday.
Thank you very much. Gosh, I'm looking at sort of the notes, the things that I wanted to, to sort of think about, and we've really done a lot in the last three weeks since, since we've been together. I wanted to, to sort of mention the trunk or treat. Someone mentioned that. What a great, what a great late afternoon that was for me, and I really enjoyed, enjoyed being there. If you have a chance to do that, a lot of, a lot of great kids and a lot of beautiful energy. I was really honored to go to the Adult, Adult Center on Friday for a really inspiring Veterans Day celebration with the veterans that were there, and we had a, had a wonderful harmonica presentation by the, by the harmonica puffers, whatever their, whatever their official name is. They did a great job. We had the Boy Scouts present and retreat the colors and, and sang veteran songs, and Rosie the Riveter was there, and it was a really a great event, and I want to thank, thank folks for inviting me there. I want to thank all the folks who joined me at Coffee with the Mayor on Saturday morning. We had a great discussion. We were really a pleasure to have a, a young teenager sort of join us and, and engage in the discussion with us, and it was really great. Most of the, most of our members are sort of of my generation, and it's really great to see young, young life interacting with, with those that sort of came before. And right after that, it was great, the Historical Society, if you don't know, does a second Saturday event, and they had, they had a great flag raising over at the Baugh House in, in honor of Veterans Day, and they, they had a banjo picker and a lot of, a lot of great patriotic tunes that we could sing in the Baugh House. What a, what a real treat it is to go back and look at what our community looked like 150 years ago. So, I want to thank them for inviting me to that. I want to highlight again, on November 3rd, we're going to, we're going to have a holiday celebration and light the lights and a lot of great activities going there, so it's a really family-friendly event, and I hope you'll come down December 3rd at 3:00 at the Green. Let's see, I was really, Counselor Ohm mentioned it, but the police recognition ceremony was a really moving, moving place to be, to, to talk about the great work that our public, public safety officers and, and our police department do throughout the year, and they're, they, they have a lot of dangerous work out there, and they do a really great job to keep us safe in our community. People say the crime is on the rise, and, and it, and it does appear to be that way, but I want to express my thanks to our Wheat Ridge Police Department for being out there, for making us as safe as they, as we can be. So, thanks to them for that. And I want to thank, you know, the election officials, you know, that put on the election in this county, or, or city clerk and the other election officials that did such a great job to, to make it possible for us to go and cast a ballot and feel like you were safe and, and it was fair and accurately tracked and, and recorded and, and so that we all have, have a, a way to participate in our democracy, which to me is the basis of the freedom that we enjoy. To the, to the citizens, and we've had some discussion tonight about, about the, the great work that we did in front of the school board to talk about the schools that were closed in our community, always, always a really wrenching decision and wrenching topic when we get to it. I want to thank the people that, that, that were mentioned and those that, that came and concerned about their schools and their communities. Two things, I hope that you'll stay engaged in the process, because those properties in the neighborhoods are not going to go away. The school district is going to have to find ways to, ways to repurpose that, those properties, and we need to have our voice at the table. So, I appreciate Counselor Ohm bringing that to, as a topic of discussion that we can discuss in council, but I really want to encourage all the citizens and parents who, who spoke out about the school closures to stay engaged in the process. And not only the process of the schools that are closed, but the schools where their children are going, and that they need to stay engaged in, in their new schools where they're going to advocate for their students and their families and the new situation that, that they're going to be education, because it, it's, it's not just going to be magic that everything is the way you want it. You have to work and dedicate yourself to doing it. So, anyway, we're about out of here. I want to remind everyone to, to drive safely. We've got some cold weather coming in. Winter certainly seems to be here, and we'll have some snow on the ground, so watch out that it's dark earlier. Watch out for those that are, that are walking and biking in our community and, and drive safely and slowly through our, through our community. There's no other business to come before council. We will stand adjourned, and we will be here next week in a study session, correct? We are adjourned. Thank you.